A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve last meeting's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any additions or deletions for tonight's agenda?
No, sir.
That takes us to presentations. Mountain Maryland Trails, Mr. Larry Brock.
Good evening. Good evening and thank you. I'm here to represent Mountain Maryland Trails along with Zach Bittner, our treasurer, Amy Schillenberg, one of our board members. We're an active 501(c)(3) group. We were instrumental in building, promoting the county and the state to build. The great Allegheny Passage is, Bill Atkinson knows, he was a few pounds lighter and didn't have any color in his hair when we started out on that.
Dave, don't laugh, you were still in diapers.
I mean, I know I'm gray, but I didn't know about the few pounds.
But it's kind of the key success to what's happened in our community and what we at Mountain Maryland Trails are doing to help promote it. Up on it right now is a live video looking down from the brush tunnel. It's up 24/7, 365 unless we have a big snowstorm and then sometimes the feed gets cut off. We put this together in just under a year with the county's cooperation and we helped fund it with the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad, Traxx and Yakx, and thank you very much to the Lavea Lions who came up with our third of the broadcast. But this is now live feed on the internet. The Sheriff's Department does have access to the database and the tourism also has access to the site and the database. And if I'm good enough to do this, ooh, wow, it works. Almost. There you go. There you go. There's the looking into the tunnel and you can also see the train when it comes up. And we've had 4,000 visitors on this site since we put it up in October. And I got to thank the county for helping us make this happen. We also work with DNR on promoting the George's Creek Trail. We presented last year to the legislators a professional cost estimate to run a railroad up through that section of George's Creek at about $11.5 million and to put a trail up for about $6.2 million. And we really do want to thank the commissioners for extending the Surface Transportation Board Agreement to, with DNR, to look into turning that into a rail trail. We sincerely hope that can come out. We've worked with the county on ride with GPS apps, which Rick Bartlett, one of our board members maintains for the county, and it's about 20 different bicycle routes. It's had about 7,000 visitors to it to help bring people to our community and bike ride. We held the 3M Bike Challenge last year. It was a race against 1309. We had 89 riders, raised $8,000. But we hate to tell you this, the scenic railroad poor 1309 got scared and didn't show up. They had some track issues and they couldn't bring the train out, but we kind of cheesed it a little bit for not showing up to the challenge. We will be challenging them again this year on September 9th. Hopefully we'll get a lot more riders in. We provided ads in the trail guide for four pages of ads, two for Frostburg, two for the city of Cumberland, to help promote tourism in our area. We've been working with the county and have gotten final approval and we'll be painting directional arrows at Valley Street on the great Allegheny Passage, pointing people through the directions. The locals know pretty well to go under Valley Street, but that one of those 60,000 people coming from out of town don't really know where to go. And we felt that'd be an easy way to do it. We went to the county and said, can we pay for it and do it with your contractor's approval? County said yes, contractor said yes, and as soon as weather permits, we're going to get it done. It should be done by May 1st. We're working with the city and the county on trying to improve safety at the Baltimore Street, working on promotion and support for the board and tunnel rebuild that's coming up this summer, and working to put art sculptures at Valley Street parking lot. We have an ambassador program that's become active in our community. They're meeting next month. We're working with the CNO Canal and hopefully the commissioners come up with a letter of support that the next section they should resurface is out of Cumberland. It is the busiest part in Allegheny County, and let's just say it's not the best part. And finally, folks, this is the part that always gets to be neat for change. I'm showing up to give the county a check.
Leave that up, Larry. Maybe you can, when you leave, we'll watch for you on that screen.
There we go. The, I call it the wicked weed whacker. All right, but that is a very serious, heavy-duty brush cutter that the county got to help clear and maintain the trail. And folks.
Goes to Dave.
Goes to Dave. I go to, goes to the one that I know, thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. It's a finance guy. There you go. You got it.
You're the first one today to bring me a check, so you win, Larry.
But again, this is private-public partnerships, working together with an asset, and we're working on other projects from Will's Mountain to George's Creek. And just, folks, thank you very much for your long, continued support.
Well, Larry, while you're standing there, it's kind of ironic, I can picture the very first check that you gave us when we was in office. We purchased that excavator through a grant program where the federal government would lease it to us for X amount for so many years, and at the end we could buy the machine out. And we matched you guys' money with our money and was able to purchase the initial machine and bought the cutter head last year.
And we bought the trailer for you.
And the trailer. So, thank you very much. People don't understand exactly how much time and effort and money you guys put into this to make it one of the best trails in the United States. We certainly appreciate it.
I have to correct you, best trails in the world.
Okay. I never.
We have.
Not a road across the world, Jamie.
It's, we're putting up maps and dig deep next month.
Yeah.
To show where people are coming from that visit us, just to kind of see what it looks like. But the trail attracts people from all over the world.
Yeah.
It really, I mean, from New Zealand to Germany to China, they all enjoy that trail.
You know, a few years ago.
And they spend money.
I was down below Cumberland, taking the grandkids out for something and ran across the guy that actually had a little damage to his bicycle. He was from New York. I had knew, didn't know who to call, what to do with him, so I called one of the trail ambassadors at that time. We brought him up to the motel, she took care of him, everything was good, he was tickled to death. He couldn't believe the treatment he got traveling through this part of it on the passage, so lots of good stories. Thank you.
And that's what we've got to really offer here. And that's a, you know, we've got good people and a good community, and it's great to see that being promoted. But thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Larry, that, we're working on that letter of support. It's being put together, so that is forthcoming.
That takes us to public hearing, constant yield public hearing. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, commissioners. As you guys know, we advertise our constant yield back on March 13th. Tonight is our scheduled public hearing on that, so I was just going to go through briefly what's the constant yield looks like this year, and then we can open it up to anyone from the public that would like to comment. So, as you guys know, annually the state calculates a tax rate that would give us the same exact tax dollars as last year. They submit that to us. And according to state law, if we have any tax rates that are going to be in excess of that constant yield, we have to advertise it in the paper, which we did. If anyone would like to look at, there's a copy up here. We run a large ad in the paper per state specifications. This year our assessments are up 3.4% as a whole and 3.7% in the unincorporated areas. So, the state calculates then a constant yield tax rate, which is .9401. Obviously, that's lower than our current proposed rate, which is unchanged from last year at .9750. Luke is the only municipality that's got a tax rate below constant yield. That's largely due to diverso. Everyone else saw increases between 3% and 8% in every other municipality. As a whole, revenue-wise, we're over the constant yield. That equates to $1,202,686 more dollars in revenue for fiscal year, 24 than 23. On average, this would be about a $30 increase for all properties. And as you know, we talk about this every year, the assessments have risen. You guys are, as of now, holding the tax rate steady where it's been after eight straight years of reductions, and you guys have held it for five straight years. So, this, now you're into your 14th straight year of either decreasing or holding a tax rate. So really, unless you guys have questions, we would open it up to the public at this point. It is a public hearing for comment. I will note, you know, we had our first budget hearing today. We have another one in two weeks. In April, we will have a budget workshop. We'll do preliminary budget April 20th, and then budget adoption would be slated for May 25th. And I will say just two other sort of announcements. Anyone that's interested, we have it on our website and it's on S-STAT's website. The homestead tax credit is out there and available. You commissioners enacted a rate on that of 4%, which is very low, so that limits an increase in any given year for homeowners that have signed up for that to 4%. It's out there. If anyone has not applied for it, they certainly can go to the S-STAT's website and work on getting that, and we'll make sure we share that even more. And as you guys saw today in our first budget hearing, all but two entities, I believe, came to us looking for an increase in the Board of Ed, actually has a baked-in $2.3 million increase. That's based on state law. Neither of the board asked for it, and we can't do anything to change that. That's just the hand that's dealt to all of us that we have to deal with. So just to, while our revenues are up, so are our expenditures, unfortunately. And with that, unless you guys have other comments, we'll open it up to anyone that's signed up from the public.
Mrs. Brand, you were signed up for the sheet at the end. Would you like to speak now, considering with this topic?
Yes, ma'am.
That's fine. Thank you.
I am dismayed that I am the only person who cares to address this issue with our leaders. I mean, 67,000 people and one person, there might be somebody else, is going to stand up here and ask you fellows to hold the line on spending. Now, you went through the constant yield, and I am a connoisseur of saving papers. Constant yield 2007, 2008, 2009, and I've saved them because I want to know where my money's going, how much you're taking, and how much the residents are giving you. And you are, in one respect, you're a fiduciary. You're to take care of that money. If someone comes as a budget head or a department head and says, I need this, you can say, we don't have it, or you take less. But I, anyway, my name's Nancy, and that's why I'm here to oppose any more taxes. And you want to raise your taxes 3.7%, and that amounts to $1,184,000. I don't know where it's going, but, and I don't know where our population is going. It is leaving us. And I'm saying, part of the reason is the taxes. The businesses look at the tax rate here. They look at how much residents pay, how much their employees, if they come here for, own a business, how much their employees are going to have to pay taxes. And if they're exorbitant, they're not coming here, along with their families and the employees' families. They're just going to go someplace else. So you did explain pretty well about the constant rate, and I assume you're, you're going for the entire amount, 3.7, right? Okay. I don't know where it's going, but I'm trusting, I'm trusting that you fellows spent it wisely. It's our money. I went to the, my, a search, I did a search on our population, and I came up with a graph. This is what it looks like. In 1975, we had 85,000 people. Now, you can look down here. This isn't California, people leaving. This is not New York, people leaving. This is Allegheny County people leaving. And I contend that a big reason is the taxation, year after year after year after year. And I only remember one or two years when you get held to the constant rate. And Mr. Burden, you probably remember this. Mike McKay was the president of the board. I can't remember exactly how many years or what years, but I remember him holding the line on spending. And every time I have a chance to build his name up, I'm doing it because I don't know anybody else that ever did. So you can see this, how many people left? It was 80, this is over a period of 40 years. It went from 85,000. We had breweries, we had bakeries, we had, our county was booming, and according, according to the search I did, or let me just tell you what kind of taxes we pay. We pay federal, state, county income, county property tax, sales tax, municipality tax. Oh, and there's that little piggyback tax that gets on the bottom of your Maryland tax return to jack that tax up. And it just goes on and on. And the stats I found that we pay more tax, more money in taxes than food, clothing, education, and our medical needs. Now, that's a lot of taxes. We can move to Pennsylvania. They don't tax retirement, and a lot of people have moved to Pennsylvania. And then, right over the river, that governor over there cares about his people. I cut this ad out and brought it, and you can look at Governor Justice. Let me just read some of the things he's doing. His House and Senate has signed off on a measure that returns more than $75 million to state residents, including a reduction in the personal income tax. It goes on and on and on. And he's giving small businesses a tax break. And he ends it by saying, we invite any and everyone to come to our state for the business opportunities that we have and the jobs that we have, and bring your folks with you. So, you know, sometimes I think maybe, maybe it would be beneficial if we succeeded, took our county and succeeded to West Virginia. Been talked about it, but, I mean, we need, we need someone pulling for our county like that. All right, let me move on. We've closed coal mining, and that made more unemployment. We caught consolidated schools. We took two hospitals and made one hospital. If you don't like it, you better go someplace else. Fewer and fewer people are here paying more and more money. Business, jobs, and young people don't come here because where are the jobs? They're, they're right over in West Virginia. Allegheny County has a distinct honor, and I found this online when I searched our county, as being the poorest county in the state of Maryland. Isn't that something that we can be proud of? Let's put a big sign out on, on all the highways. You're now entering the poorest county in the state of Maryland. And get this, get this. Maryland is, I got this from searching, Maryland is the wealthiest state in the country. Now, granted, we're kind of forgotten up here, but, but.
Mrs. Brand, could you maybe start to wrap up your comments? So we have a list of other people who wish to speak, please.
Is that five minutes? I practice as a home.
Okay.
All right. I'm saying it's okay if you fellows tell people, no, we have to keep the budget low in line. My challenge to you is to, even, you can still go back and, and go with the constant yield route and hold the line. Just remember, it's our money you're spending.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Remember where I got my information? I did a, I did a pretty good search.
Thank you.
But I'm so dismayed. Is anybody else coming up? Somebody?
Anybody else on the constant yield? Thank you. That'll take us to our consent agenda. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Commissioner. Six items tonight on the consent agenda. Item A is a request for tax abatement from the city of Cumberland to abate two properties they have acquired in the amount of $1,028.07, and it would be at 102 Altamont Terrace and 220 Harrison Street. These properties will be demolished by the city. B is an operating agreement with Airmark Correctional Services LLC. This would approve amendment number five to the contract running through July 7th, 2024, which is an approximate 12% increase, and this would be to continue to provide meals for detention center inmates. C is rules and regulations governing employees of Allegheny County, and it would be to approve resolution 23-6 to add the position of county investigator narcotics in the state's attorney's office and to revise public information officer to say public relations and communications manager. D is Bowling Green Drainage Improvement Project Phase III. That would be to approve the contract to first, the award of the contract to First Roots Excavating out of virtually West Virginia in the amount of $1,185,906.50. E is a priority letter to MDOT for the commissioners to approve and sign the 2023 Transportation Priorities Letter on behalf of the county and municipalities containing non-existing projects and six requested future projects. And finally, item F is a community permissions request to authorize $1,000 for the Old Town Summer Fest to be held on June 24th, 2023.
Any items withheld?
No, sir.
No, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That takes us to public comment tonight. Sandra Friend Rechner?
Raider.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Raider. Thank you.
I'm not well informed about all that she spoke, but I have to admire an active citizen doing her research to make the community better. Thank you. I believe in, anyway, I'm, this is the first time I've spoken in such a forum, except I felt compelled to attend city council Tuesday because I realized this is the last opportunity both in the city and county. This is March, called Women's History Month. And I was inspired, and I don't know how many of you know, that the students of Mountain Ridge High School in Frostburg, they've had the research method history classes for almost three decades. I have not looked at every one, but I believe this is the first class to ever study specifically women's contributions to Allegheny County. I don't, I believe some publicity, somebody said there's something in the newspaper about them, but I have to tell you, I am inspired because it's those who come after us who will continue the work, hopefully. And I wanted to congratulate them, and I thought, well, you've been studying women. The purpose found me about four years ago, born and raised here. They inspired me, and I was thinking I wanted to encourage them, public service, some incredibly talented, and I thought, well, you've been studying the subject where, you never showed up and said anything. And so I thought I would show up, number one, and I have sort of a sense of humor. I think it gets worse as I, more or worse as I grow older. Now, you might say it's not dementia, it's child leisure, you might say it's freeing from the, some of the, the things that we grew up with that were for our ancestors, but we're part of a new world. This is early 21st century. Anyway, I wanted to say, in modern terms, a shout-out to our sheros, right? Now, there were, there were women in Allegheny County when it began in 1789, I think, right? I read, it was when I read the professor's book at the bicentennial, the five distinguished professors, Allegheny County, a history, and it was. Where were the women? They were here, okay. So I wanted to give a shout-out to our sheros who we do not know. If they were here, I am sure they were doing the work because when others didn't do it, but they didn't get credit, but perhaps. Or we could say, with a sense of humor, the old language, that Abigail, First Lady Abigail Adams said to our second president, remember the ladies. Anyway, I appreciate, I wanted to thank you first for being able to be here. I don't have much experience with the commissioners. I'm in the process of returning to Allegheny County. If I have a few more minutes, I want to note, because I also noticed, this is the second time I've been in the room, no women. We have more national athletes, right, featured than when I was here in 2019. I was an athlete myself, but I never challenged that as a pre-title-nine athlete, really? We were unknown too. But I'm not a revolutionary, I never noticed. Anyway, the first woman in the history of Allegheny County run, ran for county government in 1966 was elected. Most votes, the only president of the Allegheny County Board so far in its history. Three women since ran. I would like to know, Lynda Gordon was the second. I would love somebody to study her story. Phenomenal. I think contributed many things, the environment, anyway. And then there were two other women, the last trailblazer, Barbara Roque. She actually was my classmate, I didn't realize because of the, the married name. Now, she was, her last term was 2002 to 2006, and if I think about that, that's two decades plus one year. And I'm listening to the radio today, I didn't realize, it's been 20 years since we invaded Iraq. I'm just trying to understand. I'm just trying to understand the picture because I don't think the trailblazers and maybe the men even, you know, they don't know or see what we hopefully may discover 50 years later. Anyway, I, I also spoke at the city council and suggested maybe if they don't have a means to institutionalize, focus on women, and you have had for decades, I don't know how long, and that's terrific. I don't know how that happened. And suggest maybe if they were interested, they would do a women's commission. Anyway, I have a suggestion that really just came to me. I never, does anybody in this room know, in my mind, and, you know, I don't, not studied that long, that our native-born Cumberland, Maryland? Now, if you're gonna honor a woman, I did not plan to say this, but I didn't know she existed. She was younger than I, I learned it, somebody showed me it. Frances Hughes Glenn Denning, Allegheny, I think, class of sixty-eight, never met her in person, but she inspires me and she makes me feel really sad that I had no clue. And I believe I read that she had the clue because her son said, where are the women? And that started her, her work. Anyway, just to conclude, she, one of the, the achievements in this field, she promoted the public partnership, the first Maryland Women's Heritage Center, the first in the nation, our model. She was the president for almost a decade, and, and their banner really says what I probably should have said and shut up in six words. Adding her story to his story to tell our story because we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mudge?
I'll just mention that I had Linda Gordon as a high school English teacher, and she really helped inspire my love for local history. Linda Gordon.
That's her.
Yes.
She has to be studied.
Well, I have a picture of her.
That's a start.
Anyway. Anyway, I, I've come tonight just to express concern about a recent real estate transaction. On February the first, 2023, there was a building at 17202 McMullen Highway in Crest of Town that was sold for six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, and the purchaser is the Women's Health Center of West Virginia, post office box 20580 Charleston, West Virginia. I've checked their website, and what I learned is that that was the only abortion clinic in the state of West Virginia, and it was forced by West Virginia state legislation to stop performing abortions. So now that's the group that has bought this building on McMullen Highway. And I just expressed concern about that, and I have a question that you probably won't be able to answer in the public meeting tonight, but I would be interested in having further conversations. My question is, what permitting process would there be for there to license an abortion clinic in Allegheny County? And on that issue and so many others, I'm absolutely in favor of Allegheny County switching from Maryland to West Virginia.
Thank you, Michael. Chris Stevens?
Hi, my name is Chris Stevens, and I am the president of the Washington Street Association, and my comment is in relation to the MDOT priority list. And I know the Washington Street Bridge has been on the priority list for some time, but has been demoted, and the Washington Street Association is very concerned that this may push it, you know, into never happening. And I know the city has not been as transparent with us as to what the solutions might be or what the problems might be that are keeping the bridge from happening. I noticed in the full agenda that the bridge that is listed in there for some time consideration in the future is still the $6 million bridge that meets all federal highway standards, and that was a concern to our residents too because of the large retaining walls and the nonhistoric character that it would bring to the street. We would like to encourage that this stay a priority and that the bridge that be used as a model is the Oakland Bridge that crosses the CSX tracks that was completed in the last 10 years. It's a modular bridge, it does not meet federal highway standards, but because we are a residential community, we believe the speed limit could be lowered below that. And we, what we understand now from the city engineer is the sticking point on that one is that the, um, federal highway standards and the, the speed limit, but they have negotiated on the height for the Fayette and the Cumberland Street Bridges. So we believe if we had a unified front among the city and the county and our state delegation and our federal delegation, that we could actually get something done with CSX instead of some folks saying it'll never happen, some saying it'll be a superhighway bridge, and others saying that, you know, it's just, we're gonna kick it down the road. We have a Save Our Bridge Committee that's been inactive for a while since the Allegheny County Commissioners have taken it up as a priority, but we're re-engaging. We have about a thousand signatures on a petition, and I know there's just a lot of residents that are worried about safety, our community connections, the, I know, as an owner there, I feel like I put a lot of money in to my house and follow the local, locally certified historic district rules, and it costs a lot to live there and to maintain these homes, which are part of the only locally certified historic district in the city, and it just feels like we're being ignored at this point. And we're really willing to engage, and we've, we've hired an engineer at one point. And talking to the city engineer and to Lori Marchini, there seems to be room for, for engagement, but we, we just can't figure out how to get everyone in the same room and to try to have these conversations so the misinformation can stop. And we can either be unified against or for a bridge, but we do believe that at this point there is a way to do it. It's gonna be hard, but we, we feel like it should happen. And another concern is tourism because it is, Washington Street is one of the only locally certified historic districts is, it's chopped in half right now, and buses can't even make it to the Civic Club any longer, so that's all. But I just thank you for your time, and please consider prioritizing this bridge, and also we're willing to work with you in any way we can as the Washington Street Association.
Thank you, Chris. This was actually brought to our attention prior to the meeting tonight, and, you know, we, we've been talking about this for a while, and we're willing to play whatever role that we can helping move this forward. Did you have some comments, Mr. Bennett, regarding that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think it's safe for me to speak for the commissioners if they all want to see this project happen.
Years ago.
Yeah, and just to make sure there's no misunderstanding from our end, we put it, the other projects that are on the list are sort of already moving forward, so they're up top. It's number one amongst those that are considered future, and the other reasoning for that is this is an MDOT letter. Really, the, the entity that we need in this case is, is the feds. So just to clarify why we're kind of where we're at, that's why. But I, I think to a person up here, we, we all want to see this happen.
Right, and, and we're all kind of murky on what the rules are, but the federal highway standard seems to be the sticking point. I don't know if federal dollars are used if that's required to, to meet that, the speed limit.
Chris, who did Oakland's bridge, upper of the railroad?
I know the attorney, Mike Getty, was involved, and he had a, you know, workaround. It was challenging because I think Oakland was against it at first, much like the city has been skeptical, but it was much cheaper too than the, the, the other one. And, you know, it, there are so many historic districts around the country where the speed limits have to slow down for cobblestone streets or arches like that, and it seems like at least we fully investigate that before we rule it out because it's, it's cheaper and better for a historic district.
Frankly, I think they should fix it at the existing height. I mean, the, the big contention was all, you know, being able to put double stacks through there. Here, here's six years have gone by, and evidently there's not a sense of urgency. I think maybe they're just trying to get out of, help them pay for it, I, you know, so-
Yeah, I know. We've heard that too, and we've heard also that they might be removing these bridges so that they could sell the line to another service, but we don't know-
Well, again, you know, that, that accident happened, I was still in city council, and it's been over six years now, so, I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll do what we can to help, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chip, would you still like to speak?
Briefly.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
So my name is Chip English. We live at 412 Washington Street, and I will keep it brief because I heard your responses. I, I just want to make sure that, that everybody else in this room hears and the media hears just how critical this bridge is. Uh, you know, 412 is a block up, Chase comes up, and then Paw Paw, we're living on Paw Paw in, in Washington.
The Franklin's old house.
Uh-huh. You know, everybody calls it that. I'd like you to-
No offense.
As the English Ayala House.
I got it.
That's okay. I, I understand that, you know, it's gonna take a long, long, probably decades before we get there. So again, I just want to emphasize how important it is, and I do want to say that there is a concern among our residents about the ability of emergency vehicles to get there because if the weather's bad, you know Allegheny Street, you know Chase Street, you can see that the best way to get there would be Washington Street with a bridge. A one-lane bridge, 10 miles an hour, something. I will confess to you, for me, the most important thing is to ride my bike down, walk around town, do those things. And again, listen, I appreciate the conversation you had, I only need to extend it. I want to introduce myself, I want to be helpful as well in, as we can, just really need, and I catch your point about where it goes, but we just don't want it to get lost. It's terribly important because it's easy. We appreciate what's happened to Fayette, we appreciate what's happened to Cumberland, we just want Washington to happen as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. Takes us to closing comments. Mr. Beaman, anything to add tonight?
I don't have anything else. Thank you, questioner.
Mr. Bennett?
Um, just one last little thing, one, based on this last conversation, you know, the last two bridges that Cumberland finished was, were, and one they're on now is because the county worked with them on federal bridge money, so, you know, we help everywhere we can, and we stand ready to help on this one too, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Jason. Mr. Burden?
So, I agree with you too. I think this is just downright ridiculous, this many years with this bridge. I just don't know what more, I, I don't know how to get through to any of these people. I mean, we've had our engineering staff involved with everyone we can, we send letters, we ask for help, we ask for support, and it's the same way we answer from, right back from CSX. I don't, I only wish we could get some money and just go around CSX, but I know then we're gonna be in a, one heck of a big court battle that we will lose. But in the same sense, I, I agree with Dave. How can they say, well, we need a double stack bridge, we gotta do this, we gotta do that? Six years went by, you'd think if it was that important, they'd have went up and set the bridge off and removed it. So I agree with you guys. I hope certainly they can get something done somewhere along the lines, so.
Very good. Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, I do have a few comments for tonight. When I ran for office, I ran to, one of my points was that I wanted to let citizens know that good things are happening in Allegheny County. So there's a lot of good things happening. I do want to let everybody know that we do have an economic development plan. It is being implemented by our very dedicated, our very hardworking economic development staff. These guys and, and girls work very hard at, at moving things and trying to move things forward through economic development. It's, it's not an easy task in doing that, but they are very dedicated, they work very hard at it, and they do have a plan to move forward. What they're working on to move those forward, can't always let the public know what's happening until actually it happens, but a lot of things are in the works. One of the tasks in our plan was for new housing infrastructures. We all know we're looking for workforce retention and, and housing for those. There are three new housing projects being proposed in the county. The Memorial Hospital site, which the county is contributing funding to, the Center Street project in Frostburg, and of course, the Allegheny High School site, of which we're taking the lead on that, and we'll be sending out an RFP for, request for developers to develop that site in the near future. So those things are happening. We use money for revitalization for downtowns and invest Allegheny and the George Edwards Funds to work in partnership with Cumberland and Frostburg for millions of dollars being pumped into the downtowns to help promote market rate apartments and remodel some of the storefronts. We partnered with ACM to do the Makerspace and the Western Maryland Works IT Center for Excellence to help educate and train our future workforce. So these are all positive things that are happening. We're developing a tech incubator in Frostburg to help employment opportunities for students that graduate from FSU. Again, things that are happening. We have a retention program. Our, our folks actually do go out and talk to folks and to businesses and try to keep them here and find out what their needs are. There has been some issues brought up with, with Hunter Douglas leaving. We've been reaching out for them for a couple months and got no response. So it, it's not for a lack of trying or lack of effort on our economic development staff for doing that. There was, however, some news with that. A hundred-plus jobs at Hunter Douglas in their customer service will be staying in Allegheny County. They are work-from-home jobs, but at this point, Hunter Douglas is not removing those jobs, so we are retaining 100 jobs from that. Tourism, I know it hits a lot of buttons. We hear a lot of good, bad, whatever from tourism, whether you like it or don't like it. Let me throw you some numbers. We're getting ready to, to get some funding. We've already received some federal funding for the $25 million River Park project that's gonna happen, that's gonna spur downtown development and, and recreation down there. Tourism is the third-largest industry sector and employs over 3,000 people in Allegheny County. It has a, generates 183 million in visitor spending. This is people coming in from outside the area, dropping money and leaving, so this is outside money. Forty-eight million in tourism tax revenue annually from those tourism businesses. We have received funding to do live concert series. It can outpace for the next three years, so a lot is going on with that. And then with, part of that is to work with economic development, and they're looking to attract outdoor recreational businesses, which has been one of the focuses that, that our plan lays out. These are industries that build outdoor stuff, they call it, and they come here for our amenities because we have trails, because we have the, the outdoors, because we're gonna have a river park. They will come and locate here because of those items that are here, not necessarily just for the incentives. They tend to stay longer because they came for our amenities that are out here, not just for the incentives that was given to them. So I think that moving in those directions, we are doing that. The George Edwards Fund, our economic development has worked real closely with that board on that. Eleven projects in Allegheny County will be announced here directly. Five point eight million dollars in spending, which is matched with 13 million dollars. So we are leveraging that money in a very good way. It's gonna create over 200 new jobs, 250 new housing units, and will help four existing small businesses take the next step in expansion, which again goes back to our plan, which is to help to promote and grow our already existing businesses that we have because, again, local businesses that are grown tend to stay local and tend to stay here throughout. So with that, I just want to give kudos to our economic development staff. They really work hard, they take a beating sometimes, but they really have the best interest of the county and the citizens of the county in trying to grow the county and trying to make things happen. So in everything that's happening, there is some good things that are happening, and the citizens need to know that there is good news out there and there's more to come. So, thank you. I'll get off my soap.
Well, I, I can't follow that, so. But thank you, everybody, for being a part of the meeting tonight. Our next business meeting will be April 6th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Just about gone through my time.